All right, I'd like to start the legislation committee of the whole. This is going to be sort of a vacuum cleaner meeting here. What I'd like to do is discharge resolutions and ordinances that we have from the previous year. Does everybody have your sheet in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay, well, what we're going to do today is we're going to go through disposal of three, six, nine, seven, fourteen, four, one. We're going to keep the next three, nine, and ten. So I'll read them off.
Say that again, three, six, nine.
Everything, Joey, everything except the introduction of local law three, local law four, and proposed resolution seven.
Okay.
So, I'd like to discharge the following resolutions and ordinances. Proposed resolution three, appropriation of spending. Proposed ordinance six, amending section two dash two dash one oh four. Proposed ordinance, public cannabis consumption. Proposed residents creating a revenue advisory committee. Proposed ordinance fourteen, rescind and replace chapter two dash two eight. Proposed residents, resolution, excuse me, number four, St. Elizabeth Medical Center plan. Proposed ordinance one, amending chapter one dash fifteen. Proposed ordinance nine, police comp. Proposed ordinance ten, police comp. Can I have your votes, please?
If we, so you said ordinance fourteen as well?
Yes, we're going to do it, and then you could bring them back if, or redo them the following year that's coming up this year.
Okay, if we vote in here, in this meeting, no votes count, but we can do it for the council.
Say again over.
No vote, no votes will count for discharging them in this meeting, but we can for the seven o'clock meeting.
No, we could do it right now, I think, right?
I don't think rules of order let us discharge it here. We have to do it at the seven o'clock scheduled meeting.
We got to do it at seven?
Yeah, but I'll...
Well, just disregard my ignorance, and we'll do that in the meeting.
No, no, you're good. Yeah, I'm good with clearing these. We'll have to bring up the towing one again. I've been getting calls from the drivers that they need to increase the storage rates.
All right, well, you can bring that up in something, bring it reback, bring it back up another time.
Sounds good.
All right, is there anybody happy with that?
I'd just like to hang on to resolution four, the St. Elizabeth Medical Center, the planning board. Last month in December, the scoping document was in front of the planning board. I'd like to get an update on that, since this is a very active project.
All right, anybody have a problem with that? Okay, I'll leave that one too. So we're going to keep on proposal resolution number four. All right, I'm all done with the meeting. Can I get a...
Motion to adjourn.
Say again, adjourn. Thank you. All right, we're adjourned.
So, the city received what through procurement process which ended last week. There's a number of consultants that are being reviewed and the city will select for the consultant and then probably about to be a year in design and permitting and then again there's going to be a couple more million dollars that'll be needed for construction so there'll be probably another grant round somewhere that we need to get this so let's say it's three years out you know at best yes.
Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks everybody.
Next I'd like to turn the meeting over to Anthony and his group so they can do a presentation.
This is for Oneida Square Arts District Association OSADA. They're teaming up with the city to apply for this asphalt grant, asphalt art grant.
Thank you Paul.
You might want to come around this way Gina.
Gina, cut through already over here.
Sorry to be obstructing the walkway. Alright. So hi everybody. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the council tonight. My name is Anthony Maraswan. I'm a community planner with Mohawk Valley Economic Development District MVed. I'm here to share a little bit of information with you about this grant program and seek your advice, hopefully your support. My colleague Samantha Francisco is here as well. You might know her from the Keep Mohawk Valley Beautiful initiative. They run a massive litter cleanup that's coordinated all over the region every year. So I'm going to turn it over to her in a second to talk a little bit about that. Also here is Gina Murtog from Oneida Square Arts District Association or OSADA who we are working with on this grant. So I think I do have a few slides to share. I won't take too much of your time. I'm going to turn it over to Gina first and introduce OSADA. Just tell us a little bit about the work that the organization does and then hear from Samantha about work that the organization does, and then hear from Samantha about her work with Keep Mohawk Valley Beautiful, and I'll be right back with you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thanks for admitting us. I live in Oneida Square. I'm going to try to get this all out. I've lived in Oneida Square since nineteen ninety-nine, and I've been part of various initiatives there as other people have. And in two thousand twenty-one, on the eve of COVID, we decided, I invited a bunch of people to Jerry DeChivoe's vintage furnishing shop to start a group. And we started OSADA, Oneida Square Arts District Association, which in Spanish means audacious. So that was in two thousand twenty-one. Two thousand twenty-three, we have nonprofit status and a board. And we've met Anthony, and he explained what the Bloomberg Asphalt Art Initiative was, and it fits our needs perfectly, especially for improving and revitalizing Oneida Square that I'm sure most people here have, have an opinion about Oneida Square. I'm constantly asked, is Oneida Square safe yet? So we're going to make it safe with this grant and with art in the arts district. Thanks.
Thank you, Gina. My name is Samantha. I'm one of the leads on the Keep Mohawk Valley Beautiful Initiative. So MVED runs that. It's the regional branch of the national organization, Keep America Beautiful. So every year, we facilitate and support litter cleanups, community gardens, and beautification projects. We also partnered with Green Utica, the Utica Rotary, the City of Utica, on an urban tree planting project. So that was the over a hundred trees that were put in along the Memorial Parkway and different residential areas throughout the city of Utica. So we have experience with successfully working on an executed, successfully working on an executed project with the city and multiple other collaborators. And it's not that we want to shy away from doing the litter cleanups. That is one of the biggest parts of Keep Mohawk Valley Beautiful, but we would like to focus on more beautification projects, and we thought that this would tie it nicely.
Thank you very much, Gina and Samantha. Promise, it's a really quick presentation. I just want to take you through the basics of this so you can get an idea of what we're talking about. But OSADA described their goals to me, and they had a lot to do with perceptions of public safety, with making a really impactful visual change in the neighborhood that would kind of alert and communicate in a legible way that visitors are entering an arts district, which now, you know, even with these anchor institutions there, like Munson and the library, people are unlikely to linger in a place where they're not feeling safe. So, you know, there's no silver bullet to public safety, obviously, but this is one tool that we feel like could be really effective for, you know, fairly low risk and low costs. The request can be up to a hundred thousand dollars. There's no match to this grant. All of the funding goes toward the project. It's only open to cities of fifty thousand or more, so Utica is the only city that we serve in our organization that would qualify under the terms of the grant. And they really focus on collaboration. So we're super excited to be working with both KNVB, OSADA. We've started talking to the Utica Public Library. Mary Murray from Munson also serves on the board of OSADA, so we have some of these connections in motion. We're really hoping to kind of synergize all of that energy in this neighborhood with this project. It does take place over a two-year project term, so I want to emphasize that, that the design choice, the site selection, all of that goes with the outreach process that's built into this. So this is really, the application is really just a beginning, and hopefully we get to move it forward and figure out what's going to work best for the neighborhood. So these are the three stated goals of the initiative itself through the Bloomberg Philanthropic Foundation, and they're pretty fitting. I mean, we are looking at four different types of projects potentially. All of their project types fit into one of these four buckets, but happy to report, the grant just went from twenty-five thousand dollars where it was set to a hundred thousand dollars this year. So there's no limitation on multiple sites. There could be a themed approach where we're doing, you know, different sites in a coordinated way to try to have a certain impact. These are all open questions, but that gives you some idea of what we might be able to accomplish. Again, you know, public safety has a lot of components to it. There's a lot of reasons why Oneida Square feels unsafe. A lot of them aren't going to be fixed with art, but perceptions of public safety go a long way, and there's a real compounding effect. When people feel safe in a neighborhood, they will take longer walks, they'll linger farther, there will be more people out and about, they will be more likely to patronize local businesses. All of that hopefully has a catalytic effect on the neighborhood to really drive future investment. That's the point of this, is not to begin and end with this one project, but to kind of spark a conversation and get the community involved and together in a way that focuses this energy, creates something beautiful, and tells a positive story about Oneida Square. Just a couple examples of projects that have been done nearby. City of Syracuse just did this last year, I believe. This underutilized roadway in front of City Hall, they closed it down to vehicle traffic and painted it. They put out an RFP to select an artist and selected the one they wanted, painted it, and now they have all kinds of great programming going on. I'm excited to check it out, maybe when the weather warms up a little bit. This is another one in Troy, New York. This one used the pylon supporting the Husick Street Bridge over the Hudson River, so Route seven, if you've ever traveled that way through North Troy, you know how it kind of bisects that neighborhood. Well, this is under that bridge, and they got the community together, hired a local artist, and were able to create this really open welcoming space that they are now looking at long-term to study the public safety benefits of it. But early anecdotal results are showing that, yeah, it's a lot more active when there are things to do, when it looks attractive, when people are paying attention to it and giving it the love that it deserves, so that it's not an invitation for nefarious things. And then just based on OSADA's needs, this is one non-local example, but the idea of creating a neighborhood gateway, so figuring out everything that we can about the neighborhood itself, the people who live there and work there and visit. Who is there? What do they want represented? What do they want to communicate to the world about the neighborhood? And what do they want people to see when they're entering it for the first time? So this idea of a neighborhood gateway, we thought was really compelling and something that we kind of keep, keep coming back to in our conversations. Like I said, there's no match for this. The budgeting is really flexible. Some places pay the artists five hundred dollars, some places have paid the artists ten thousand dollars. Again, all open questions, part of the process as we move through this. But taking the ninety or so projects that they've funded and averaging them out, this is what you get per square foot of artwork. So just to kind of visualize what that would look like, these are three somewhat arbitrary selected sites that, that we were looking at as maybe potential candidates for this type of project. I'm sure you all recognize where they are without me telling you. The blue highlights here show what you could do at that level, just area-wise, for half of the, the limit to the grant request. So, you know, that's the kind of impact that you could have along that whole block, connecting these really high-profile flagship DRI projects across the street from each other and kind of signaling to everyone that they're entering the arts district. Another example, the roundabout at Oneida Square may be widening the crosswalks so that folks, pedestrians crossing the street would feel a little safer. There's that brickwork that goes all the way around the plantings in the middle. All of that could be painted, could be a chance to incorporate other pieces of artwork to highlight the work that's going on now with the Soldiers and Sailors Monument. I know there's a cool lighting project going on there. So for just over what the grant would provide, you could have that big of an impact. And then this one, I travel through this all the time in a car, on foot, on a bike, and it's, this intersection is, it's a little rough. This is Eagle Street and Park Avenue, and, you know, it's just, there's a lot of, there's a lot of roadway, and it's, it can be a little bit confusing if you're not familiar with it. So it's, it's not ideal. Again, no silver bullet for this, but with just paint for a few thousand dollars, you can do a lot just to provide visual cues for drivers that they'll respond to and maybe be a little bit more careful and drive a little more slowly. So this is what the timeline might look like, two-year period. The earliest we'd hear about this grant is in the spring of this year, after which would follow a really robust outreach process, which at MVED we take really seriously. That would be something we would take on and engage with all these places. Community meetings, maybe at St. Francis de Sales Center, at the library, at Munson, at City Hall, you know, trying to get people out, trying to get as representative of a sample as we can to, to figure out what people actually want to see there.
Can you add a question? Can you go back one?
Please. I hope so. I'm sorry, I can... There we go.
Are you just going to, are you just outlining the areas you're going to paint, or are you just going to paint that wood?
Oh, no, just to be clear, these are visual aids only. So this is saying, if we requested that much money, that's just the sheer amount of space that you'd be able to cover at that level, based on what other communities have spent in the past.
Because that wouldn't be bad, because that's where they have the, that's where they have the music festival on every Monday. So that'd be a great place for, for doing some of that, I think, right there, because there's always a crowd there, and that'd be really nice for that.
Yeah. And at the end of it is hopefully a great big community event. Most of these projects on a larger scale, they have the artists come and outline the design, and then the community shows up, and you can have kids out there with paintbrushes kind of painting by numbers and filling it in, and it's, it's a really cool thing to be able to, to show that is bringing the community together on a beautiful summer day in two thousand twenty-six. So I, I just want to thank, in conclusion here, the city thus far. I mean, I'm, I'm so grateful for, for the movement here and the responsiveness from the mayor's office, from the engineering department. We had a great conversation with the, the city engineer on Monday, and here we are today talking to you. So it's a, it's a testament to the city's willingness to, to hear ideas like this, to everybody that's standing up here, their willingness to participate and help to make it happen. And these are just some examples of things that we might ask you for if you would be so kind as to lend us your support. So with that, I'm happy to hang out, answer questions that I can answer, or if you have OSADA or KNVB questions.
My question is, once you get this installed, how long is it going to last with all the snow and ice and salt?
Yeah.
Who's going to replace it? Is it going to be the city's role to replace it and the funding?
Great question.
Or is it a one and done?
So, open question. Part of the grant application includes a maintenance plan, so they want to know how you plan to maintain it. They expect the project to last for a minimum of two years. So you have to convince them in the grant application that you're capable of maintaining it for two years, which means building in a plan that might include the city. It might include Keep Mohawk Valley Beautiful volunteers coming and touching up the paint, maybe clearing litter, that kind of thing, but that would all be incorporated into the plan. And the, I can say, the majority of these projects going back five or six years now are still there. There are very few of them that have just completely disappeared.
Well, I mean, like we did the Nurses' Park years ago, nurses that are going to take care of, take care of, it never did. You know, it became inundated with all kinds of stuff, so that's what I'm curious about. I mean, if it's going to be dropped on the city, it's going to be a budget line to repaint after we get that grant. It's only a one and done grant, right? Assigned a continuous grant.
That's true, yeah. It's, it's definitely a valid concern, yeah.
Because we do have salt, we have ice, we have, we have it all. And it might not last a year, but all that, you know, following everything else.
And it's going to seal it this year, too.
Well, can I, I'd like to add to that, from the administration side, because this is something I'm five hundred percent behind. One, OSADA, I'll just state that since prior to their inception, I was speaking with the people at Forum, this group, about Oneida Square, one point two about Oneida Square, especially post-COVID. Went to multiple meetings they had, was at their first meeting when they became an actual 501, because they wanted to understand how they could work with the city. The whole goal here is to transition Oneida Square into the trajectory it was pre-COVID, where you had people walking, you had businesses flourishing. You didn't have a public opinion that it was pointed in the wrong direction. Okay, as far as the funding and the maintenance, when I put together our new DRI proposal that we were asked for a second round proposal, Brian and I wanted to, as part of what we came in with, you know, last year, with the new vision of Oneida Square, we wanted to include that. We couldn't, because the state would not allow us to include Oneida Square again in another proposal. So we started, I actually went back to OSADA, and I said, all right, so we can't put it in this. Brian and I were looking at CDBG funding, because the actual uplift of Oneida Square is something that's going to improve the entire community. So if, for example, this paint work was put down, because I've already looked at what this involves, what it's going to involve to seal, which you can comment on that, and how long it's going to last, the minimal amount of potential CDBG funding we might need to put to this to either return it back to original if we can't maintain it, for example, as that was it, or repaint and keep it, okay, in the future, is going to be a very, very small actual maintenance fee as compared to the CDBG funds we'd already be using to maintain the brickwork, maintain the streetlights. So it, for what this would do for the neighborhood, as far as bringing in people and cleaning up the neighborhood, it's, I'm not looking at it as, as an insurable cost at all. It's not going to be Nurses' Park. And on top of that, OSADA is now an established 501, and they've demonstrated a commitment to, even in a case where we couldn't put the application of Oneida Square into DRI proposal, I met with them, and then they went and sought out other ways to improve Oneida Square. So like right now, we're relighting the monument, and they're going after this grant. So we now have a new partnership with this group where we can truly rebuild Oneida Square with engaged participants who live, work, and play in that district. So I know I'm not really balancing a lot on the cost, but I'd like you to speak to the sealant, because this will be something more like the mural. It's going to be more of a longstanding application to the, to the actual, the street work. And they're already meeting with engineering to make sure, hey, if we're going to do this, what's that look like on the infrastructure and pavement?
Yeah, yeah. It's a fantastic point about the, the value that we'd potentially be creating. I mean, that would be the focus here, is trying to, trying to make that not just wash, but create a positive source of value for the neighborhood. So we're not trying to, to create a boondoggle or a source of, you know, ongoing maintenance headaches. The idea would be to, to make a change that's positive enough, positive enough to drive investment in the neighborhood and get people there. And just speaking from our perspective, this would just be the beginning. I mean, MVED has been around since nineteen sixty-six. We're really excited to be getting into more of this placemaking stuff. We're getting better at it all the time, and I'm, as a resident of Utica, I'm personally thrilled to be able to be doing it here.
And something like this is going to allow our economic development and IDA departments to pitch, like the former Popeye's Building, to new storefronts, right? A lot of shuttered properties, and when I bring people to that neighborhood, or I pitch that neighborhood right now in a vision deck, for example, right now, if this is something that is either coming or awarded, now that's positive movement, where we can say, hey, invest in this property. It's something we really need to do, which should have a positive to the neighborhood.
So it's only paint, there's nothing else.
Well, so, so the sealant would be recommended by them to, not just recommended, but the way this works is, the applications that they think are likeliest to succeed before the awards are announced, they get assigned a rep from this organization, and the rep is familiar with not just the logistics of administering the grant funding, but all of that practical stuff, too. So we would lean on them, we'd lean on engineering a lot to make sure that we're not doing damage or we're not creating inefficiencies, but the sealant would be an important part of that. The layer has to go on top to protect it and be replaced. It's one of the more common in-kind contributions that cities make to projects under this program, just because they already have sealants on hand most of the time.
So no fencing or nothing like that, just...
Again, open question. The design is, is yet to be envisioned, so...
It's reasonable to ask about fencing, because it's sort of cellar-like, and it's always being climbed on and everything else, and, you know, people are just hanging all over all the time. It should be...
Oh, gotcha. I don't, I don't think, under the terms of this grant, you'd be able to create a new space that you're controlling access to. I think it has to be done in the public right-of-way, where people are allowed to be. So it's not, it doesn't function like a public park in that way. It wouldn't be a parcel that we're developing. It wouldn't be a parcel that we're developing. It would be part of the public infrastructure.
The only question I have is, well, it might lead to a couple more, but I'll start off with, is the Mohawk Valley Economic Development District the one that's applying for the grant?
So the city would actually be the applicant. We would be serving as the fiscal sponsor, most likely, so we would directly receive the funds and administer them and do all the reporting and all of that stuff.
So, and the only reason why I ask that, because I see the deadline for the application is due January 31st. So if the council was to have to be involved in that, are meetings not until February?
Oh, yes.
So if we ever had to put in a resolution for support in this, we would have to call a special meeting, so I don't know how that works.
We did submit one for tonight. It's in, like, halfway through the packet. A resolution in support of the grant.
Where's that?
It's in the packet.
I might have missed a breath, not realizing that this was in regards to the project that we actually had.
Or it's 21.
I mean, one second.
21.
Oh, so it was submitted yesterday, okay. Just wanted to make sure I didn't overlook anything. So I didn't really get a chance to go through it, and I didn't realize that this was in connection, because we just got the Arts District that was here for a presentation, not for the actual support of the resolution.
Right, yeah.
So, okay, with that said, now that this resolution's in there, the only other question that I have is, how is the Bloomberg philanthropist, how is it funded? Is that through private funds? Is that through state funds? Or do you have any clue about that?
I don't have a, I don't have an idea, really. I mean, I assume, like any big organization like that at the corporate level, they've got probably pretty wealthy private donors.
I was just curious, you know, if they worked with, it was like state funding, if the state was involved.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't looked at that, but I absolutely can.
Have you ever received any funding from Bloomberg philanthropy?
No.
So this would be the first grant application that you would submit?
Yep.
I'm beguiled to that, okay.
Yes.
That's it, well, yeah, thank you.
And just for clarity's sake, the matter of, like, who's the applicant? I know that that's really key in most grant applications. Because this one operates all around the world, and different countries and cities have different ways of organizing government, they defer to the city to decide how they give permission to us, for example, to apply for this grant on their behalf. So, you know, a letter of support might do it. The point being, if Bloomberg calls you in three months and says, hey, this person's listed as your contact for the engineering department, and you have no idea what's happening, that's not a good look for anybody.
Well, because that's another reason why I asked that and didn't realize that this resolution was attached to this, because MVED wasn't involved in the actual resolution neither. So it just came in OSADA, that's why I was just wondering what your connection was through that.
Correct.
And how that actually went through.
We're really working as a consultant for OSADA, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, very good. That's it, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you all very much. Greatly appreciated.
Well, thank you very much for coming. I'd like to discuss the packet. The first thing on the agenda is a resolution requesting assistance in the hospital care. I'd like to turn this over to Councilman Beatrice.
Yes, thank you, thank you. So this past year has been a very difficult year. I lost my mom, lost my stepfather. I'm sorry, not like I lost my father, my stepfather. No, my stepfather, my stepfather has gone through...
Yeah, you just can't find him.
So the dilemma with emergency rooms is not a win problem. And I'm not here to defend win at any, any rhyme or reason, but it's not a win problem. I take a lot of pride in our city, and every time there's an issue, all we get is win, win, win. It's not the win. This is a state problem throughout the state. Hospitals, the emergency rooms are overloaded, they're short-staffed. I'll give you an example with my father-in-law. Now, on New Year's Eve, I had taken my ambulance to the Wynn. We sat there for two and a half hours. There was, when I went to the gentleman at the desk, there was four people sitting in the room, and this was an 84-year-old man who's not in good health, sitting in a wheelchair. And I asked, how long's it going to be? I can't tell you. We're at full staff. Now, I already did all the research. At Wynn, and again, this is not about Wynn, I'm just using an example, at Wynn, in our new hospital, we have 60, we have 47 ER rooms, we have 10 observation rooms, and we have three special rooms. So we have 60 rooms. The other two hospitals together, before, you had, you didn't even have 40 rooms. They were lined up on gurneys in the halls. So when I talked to the gentleman, it's New Year's Eve, I said, you're going to tell me all those rooms in the back are full? And I know what it looks like back there, because my father-in-law, in August, that's where we were. So I know it's like a special hospital. He said, no, there's 30 rooms that are filled, we have 30 rooms that aren't full, but we have no staff for it. Okay? So that was just that day. So my point in all of this, during the pandemic, when my mom was in the hospital, when I was in other hospitals, we used, we used guardspeople. Guardspeople, National Guardspeople, they're trained in triage, okay? They're getting paid regardless. So I just came up, you know, when I'm seeing on Facebook last week, you know, everybody's ripping Wynn, when I know I sent friends because of the reputation of Wynn, they don't want to go to Wynn, they went to Upstate, they sat in that hospital for five hours before they were taken. My father-in-law, before he passed, they sent him to Albany, he sat in a wheelchair for 15 hours. So my whole point is, it's not just a win problem. So, and I don't believe that any person, regardless, should have to sit in an emergency room in a wheelchair for 15 hours, or five hours, or whatever. So that's where I came up with this. I talked to the judge. And I like to read a letter that I have from the COO, William La Crease, from Wynn that he sent me. It says, Dear Councilman Beatrice, we greatly appreciate your support. Thank you for advocating on behalf of New York hospitals. As you point out, state and federal government programs are vital to the success of the hospitals. At MBHS, we work closely with New York state officials and address many issues, including challenges, funding, staffing, and increasing the demand for emergency service. We're grateful, we're grateful to legislative leaders such as yourself for placing healthcare as one of the top priorities for our government partners. On the side, I appreciate your praise for the National Guard soldiers who support our local healthcare organizations during COVID. I'm an active National Guard soldier myself, and I have knowledge of the New York Army National Guard medical capabilities. Although I don't speak for the National Guard in my role as MBHS COO, I can attest that the soldiers of the New York State National Guard are remarkable individuals who would rise to any challenge with strength and determination. Best regards, Phil. So I just, that's all, that's all that I want here. I'd like to point out to, you know, our state and our government leaders, we need help. And it's just to help people out, and I would hope you guys all support me on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Joe, I appreciate you taking that on. It's great that you're doing that, because we definitely need help in there. But that letter that the CEO sent you, are you going to include that with the resolution sent out? I think that would be great.
Well, we can do that, yep. I asked him if I could share, it was an email that he sent me back. I asked him if I could share it with the council.
Maybe we could incorporate that and send that on, because I think that's very powerful. I think that'd be great if we could forward that on as well.
Thank you. He also said if we ever need any of their support to come and talk to us, that they'd be more than welcome.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Joe. The second piece is a commissioner... Joe, you want to go full council on that when you're on the vote?
Anybody who wants to join in, get on it, I'd be happy to have you guys on.
Thank you. That'd be a great idea, full council. The second proposed is Commissioner Deeds, Sherry Burmaster, 1202 Cap Lab, 13502, Utica, New York. Any questions? Any problems? Good, thanks.
You good with that?
I'm good with that. Next one's Commissioner Deeds for Alma Mujeke.
Can you get it?
Did I say that?
City employee.
922 Lansing Street, Utica, New York, 13501. Any questions?
Nope.
Good. You can see why I wasn't a teacher, I have trouble with these names. The next one's going to be Commissioner Deeds for Nandine, Ron Sinia.
Tony, sounds good.
Thank you. 1128 Whatmore Street, Utica, New York, 13501, a city employee. Any questions? The next one's Commissioner Deeds for Seewa, 702 Jefferson Ave., Utica, New York, 13501. Any questions?
No.
Very good. The next one's Commissioner Deeds, Jennifer Gorce, 77 Clinton Street, apartment U4, New York Mills, New York, 13417. She's a county employee. Any questions? Very good. Next one's Commissioner Deeds, Jack Spratt, 9462 Sessions Road, Secoit, New York, 13456. City employee. Any questions? Okay. The next one's Commissioner Deeds, James Zeca, 2662 Edgewood Road, Utica, New York, 13501. Any questions?
Well, questions?
No, very good.
We'll let that go.
Very good. The next one's Commissioner Deeds, Lisa Weeks, Finnegan?
Finnegan.
Finnegan, 9609 Central Road, Secoit, New York, 13456. She's a county employee. Any questions? Okay, next one's Commissioner Deeds, Matthew Black, 90, Clinton Street, Whitesboro, New York, 13492, county employee. Any questions? No. Next one's Commissioner Deeds, Frank Miola, 33 Nob Road, Utica, New York, 13501. Any concerns or questions? Good, thank you. I think we took care of both of the commissioners. We'll see, but Proposition for Resolution Number 12, Resolution Appointing a Candidate for Appointment to Utica Mohawk Valley Regional Water Board. I see it's Richard Kur, evidently he's been there before. Any questions or concerns?
Has anybody reached out to him and seen if he wants to be reappointed?
We got a letter. I emailed it to him. How old is he? I know.
Okay, very good, thank you. Proposed ordinance number 13. This is from Carlos Moltesta and Beatrice. Ordinance amending section 2-17-1 of the Utica City Code of Ordnance.
I can talk on that. So the administration's had a number of discussions as to how to address some of the issues that we're having in various areas, especially downtown, relating to, you know, public nuisances and trash and litter and issues relating to homelessness. This first piece, we had some internal discussions as to, just to clean up our public nuisance legislation. We already have a procedure as to how we handle those hearings, but we added some additional language to just make it clear, when we have the hearings, specifically relating to number nine and 10, that we could, it would be a nuisance if there's an accumulation of garbage. And then just the, in number one, adding the cannabis, it's just correcting it as to how it's referred to in the penal law, because they made the changes. So that's proposed ordinance number 13.
Any questions? Shall we put that in committee? Well, I'm throwing it out there.
I think we could just...
Mayor?
I was going to say, regardless of how the council acts on this particular piece, if it goes in committee, becomes a larger discussion, this is part of the administration's overall recommendations on how we could better deal with not just vacant properties, but properties that are unkempt or fall subject to the unhoused and drug-addicted and/or mentally ill. One of the big issues we have right now is you can mow lawns, and that goes on the taxes. Throughout the majority of last year, through our direction, the Parks Department and DPW...
I haven't gotten to those pieces.
Yeah, I know we haven't gotten to those pieces. We've been cleaning up a lot of those properties. So this is going to be a series of kind of just legislative requests for the council to go over, so that we can start to chip away at our city code, so we could better effectively deal with these problems.
And we actually had several meetings in regards to this. This was in coordination that we had said we would work on with the Law Department to change some wording on that. And this was the legislation that they submitted on behalf of that. But we had had several meetings, and that's, hence the reason why I pulled the last legislation, because this does clean up, or discharge my piece that I proposed, because another way around it, instead of... How, what am I, what am I trying to say? Making other laws, or laws that we already have on the books that we could amend in order to justify what we were trying to do, this was a simpler way to do it, knowing that we already had the law on the books.
Very good.
So just as, just for clarification purposes, this isn't just something that came overnight. This is something that we've been working on for the past few months.
Yep, very good.
Does anybody need, we need to put this in committee, or I mean, I'd be willing to vote on this tonight.
I'm willing to vote on it tonight as well.
It is, and it just literally clears up language so that the city can go after other things other than waste, and this was a way that we found to clear it up without having to pass additional components of legislation.
When you mean other than waste, what else is it? It's just the needles?
Well, the first piece of legislation changes number nine to include, clearly specify trash or garbage, so we can go after them as a public nuisance if you have an accumulation of trash or garbage.
So we already can't do that with codes?
Say that again?
So we already can't do that if there's garbage outside?
No, we can do that with codes, and we can cite them for codes. This is for a public nuisance, so we have a separate hearing procedure relating to that. So just to clarify and make it clear, we added that in so that if there is a property that has, you know, accumulations of garbage that are piling up, it would be a public nuisance, it would be called in for a hearing, and those procedures would follow. And then with relation to number 10, that was just making it clear that anything that's a criminal nuisance would also be considered. It's just, again, clarifying it and just making it clear that they can be brought in on a public nuisance.
When we do, also with number one, any building structure or real property used for the purpose of illegal use, whether it's as possession or distribution of a controlled substance, or cannabis, but if you have possession of cannabis, that's no longer illegal.
There's a ton of other statutes that apply to cannabis that are still currently illegal.
Hence the reason why it's defined by the penal code, and you have to adjust it, because they changed the name from marijuana to cannabis.
I think, too, the way, the way it's written, illegal use, it, I mean, it could be a 17 or 18-year-old, a minor.
Yeah, so any, yeah, yes.
Joe, you picked this, you, anything legally in there you don't like?
No, I'm willing to vote on this tonight, personally.
Are you happy with it, right? So you're willing to vote on it?
Possession?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Proposed ordinance number 14, amending section 2-22-1 of the Utica Codes. Again, this is part of...
Part of a bigger picture. This amends several definitions relating to trash and solid waste and garbage. We added a biohazard to address the issues that we're having with urine, feces, needles, other bodily fluids, because it is taking us extra time, because we need other, other departments and/or other entities to come in and help us address those issues.
Can we talk, can we talk?
Any other questions? We should be able to vote on this as well tonight.
Q and A.
Any questions?
I'm fine with it.
Number 15, ordinance amending section 2-22-7A of the Utica City Code of Ordnance. This is a continuation as well?
Yep, so this is just to add that language, so it applies to garbage, trash, solid waste, biohazardous waste. So it already exists that if there is trash on the property, the city can go in and abate it and then charge a fee for that, but now we're trying to include other things. So if we're going on a piece of property and removing various biohazard wastes, et cetera, it just makes it clear that we can do that. And I know this is part of the mayor's, you know, bigger plan to, to address the issues and try to get both vacant and non-vacant properties to start addressing the issues that are going on on their properties, especially downtown.
So this is going to bring a pretty big change, actually. So this is what I was alluding to before we went through all the pieces. Right now, we... to before we went through all the pieces. Right now, we can fine people, okay? They can pay their tickets and they just do it over and over and over again. We have multiple issues with not being able to apply things to taxes. One is when something gets applied to taxes, it's a much more serious issue than if it's a fine, they can go to court, now they're, they can adjourn, et cetera, get out of the fine. There's all kinds of different things. This is simple, okay? If, for example, new century building, okay, on the grounds has a, an encampment of unhoused, okay, and they fail to remedy the situation on their own property, and the Parks Department, DPW Department, which you saw this multiple times. You saw this at Kemp Building, you saw this in multiple different sites, you saw this at the building that did catch fire next to Copernic Park. When we're cleaning that stuff up last year, we didn't have a real way to assess the cost of what that was and apply it to the taxes. We can do that now. So, this isn't just vacant properties. This is properties that actually may have an apartment rented, but the landlord still doesn't care and allows that to happen on the property. The other issue with fines, okay, and the cost the city is accruing, is as you know, URA has been much less active. The reason URA has been much less active as of last year is a new law was passed in which case we can only recoup things that are on the taxes on these properties. If we have to end up taking a property back from the tax rolls because we had to foreclose on it, for example, if we were dealing with issues like this on that property and six or seven times, we had to go and assess a $1,000 cleanup on that property, that now exists on the taxes. If it doesn't exist on the taxes, when we auction that property or end up activating URA again and sell that property, we can only keep the unpaid taxes plus 2% of the, of, is it the assessed value?
It's, no, it's 2% of the...
For the sale.
No, 2% of the, for the expenses, or...
Right.
$250.
Right. So, basically what the state did was create a situation where if we took a property in and $10,000 in taxes eroded, okay, 6,000 of that were fees. Now, when we sell that property, we get those fees back, okay, because they were assessed and placed on the taxes. If we don't do that and we auction a property off, we get the taxes back and, like we just said, 2% or $250 of the expenses that went into maintaining that, which isn't even enough to board up a house. So, we no longer exist in a reality where URA properties, for example, the revenue comes and can fund budget, can fund URA for more economic development activity. We have to remand all that to the courts and they deal with it like a bankruptcy. We don't even keep that money in longer. It's also much more impactful to the property owner. Like I said, fees, tickets, doesn't matter. You start racking stuff up on the tax bill, they're gonna start coming back and cleaning the property up.
Mayor, we got a question.
Yeah.
What's, what's the question? I'm reading this. What's the fee?
The fees are set forth pursuant to another section of the code. There's no fee set. It's the cost of the cleanup. So, if it costs $200 that day, it's $200. We have to obviously have documentation to support it. If it costs $1,000, then we can, you know, impose $1,000. So, it depends on what exactly the cleanup cost is. And as long as we have the documentation to support that, we should, we don't have any issues.
Correct.
It sounds a little ambiguous in the sense that...
It's not.
No, I can, I can explain.
So, we give...
Well, hang on. Let me explain. So...
Because I mean, how do you know how much?
So, for example, let's say we need a front loader, okay? We need four Parks employees, DPW, and police on staff. We're keeping track of all that time.
So, you got fees on those?
Well, exactly. Well, yeah, we know the cost of those services. So, for the time we're cleaning it up, whether it's tipping fees or manpower or equipment, that we've already assessed through a lot of our different shared services, we have hard documentation on what those things cost to run or the staffing cost to have on site.
And I just, I just wanna...
So, if someone takes this to court, you're gonna have to prove...
Well, that's, no, that's why we're doing it.
So, and I just wanna be clear. We have been doing this for a very long time. This is currently how we do when we go and cut grass on people's properties. It's all documented. This is, again, just making it clear that we can go in for other things, so biohazardous waste, et cetera. And again, we give them a, an opportunity to contest those charges internally before they even have to go to court. But this is gonna be the, again, we're not really changing much other than trying to give that clarity so that we can address not just trash and not just grass cutting, that it has those other things that, you know, are creating public nuisances on properties.
And if you stack all these pieces of legislation up in order, it creates a situation where now, through the Public Safety Commissioner, through my office, if there's a problem, we could say, go south, instead of waiting for a property to burn down because there's homeless or unhoused, literally lighting a fire on the porch.
I think it's a good idea. I just, I'm not quite sure on the fees. We're gonna have the receipts for all the tipping fees when we bring it to the county. So, when my guys go there and we dump it, they weigh in, they weigh out, and we get a paper. I get the papers, I send them to Danielle, and they go to Mark.
Councilman LaMotta, I just wanna make it clear, we already do this all the time. Like, it's, we already apply fees for dumping garbage. The mayor's just expanding the definition. Further...
We charge for time for employees that have to go out and cut for us.
Yeah, we do this. I mean, his secretary, he was in my office. I mean, we do this all the time. And also, the council passed, I don't know if it's this council or previous council, legislation to make those fees escalate to repeat offenders. And you guys asked all the same questions about fees then. So, it's, it's, the fees that get applied to the taxes are the same as the fees that get applied to the taxes. The mayor just expanded it so that there's more...
And I should, and I should just be clear. You have to, because they're going on the taxes, there's a little bit more of a consideration. It's not a fine or a fee. It's, it's going on the taxes because...
It's an assessment.
Yes. So, there's some other restrictions that apply in relation to that. So...
Very good. Thank you. I assume Number 16 is an extension of 13, 14, 15?
Yep. And this is just to take out the leeway that, you know, claiming that if, you know, that we didn't put this, you know, these trash or whatever on our property. Again, you know, this applies to a lot of stuff downtown. You know, people are walking by. It just is gonna encourage people to go and make sure that their property is clean and maintained. So, and the reason I didn't remove that section entirely is just procedurally, there's some other sections beyond that I just wanna have that in case I need to add something in at a later date.
Very good. I'd like to make 13, 14, 15, 16 phone counsel. Any questions or problems with that? No? Okay. Number 17 is Commissioner Deeds, and that looks like the whole council, Katie Yallow, Robert Birmaster, Joseph...
We just have to make one amendment from, to my address.
Very good.
That's it.
Any other addresses to be amended?
Was it to change it to Markingburg Lane?
No.
Any other questions? Number, Number 18 is what the... Oh, we, we talked about it with, with Paul before. Any, any questions about this? It's Amendment to Resolution Number 7 for November 20, 2024, authorizing the implication in funding in the first of 100% of the federal, for the bridge that they were talking about? Any, any questions about that? I thought Paul was pretty clear about that. Do you have any questions?
No, we have clarification from the state.
We're good on that.
Very good. Thank you. Number 9, Ordinance for the Reduction of the Accidental...
It's 19.
What'd I say?
9.
Did I say 9? Well, 19, Ordinance for the Reduction of the Accidental Sharp Injuries to the General Public.
So, I can, I can talk on this and then I think the mayor will...
Guys, we got around, we're starting this minute at 7 o'clock, so...
This is why I just put things into committee.
We just put a piece of legislation in five minutes ago. They took our inferior power for a committee meeting.
Well, we can still go through these and discuss them at the 7:00 PM, being anyhow.
Yeah.
We wanna get to it then.
Okay.
So, so just briefly, again, this is to address, you know, the public nuisance and the issues that are going on, you know, relating to needles. And essentially, the legislation tries to, well, it doesn't try. The goal is to reduce...
So, in the interest of time, put this in committee. Talk about it. Okay?
Yep.
What I'm proposing in this legislation and what we worked on, and this, this is something that has happened in other communities, is requiring that the needles which are given away are self retractable. Okay, so just put it in, just put it in committee, talk about it, because there's cost considerations.
We'll, we'll decide that, Mayor.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, my request would be for you guys to talk about it. If you wanted to vote on it tonight, go ahead. But I'm just saying, like, we're not trying to ram this one down. If this goes in committee, that's cool, like, especially since you guys are trying to move.
But it should be an open vote. I mean, it's...
I just wanna know what I'm voting on, so we'll get more time. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Number, Number 20, Proposed Resolution.
So, are we voting on this or are we going to...
Committee.
Put it in committee.
We just got 21.
Resolution 20.
Proposed Resolution Number 20, from Proclamation of Recognition, Fred Faze, Mary Allen Carrot, Tim Ryan, and over 50 years of employment of Shenatrie's Market.
Yeah, so this is a proposed proclamation congratulating and recognizing three employees at Shenatrie's who have served for over a half century. I think that goes without saying. It's, it's quite impressive. So, would like to make this full counsel.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Number, Proposed Order Number 21, Resolution Supporting the gentleman that was here earlier, Anthony?
Yeah, sure. I just got, I just want for clarification, because I wasn't losing it. When did this resolution get submitted to the council? To the clerk's office?
It was today.
Today.
It's a resolution.
So, just for, just for clarification purposes, we just got it at 4:00.
Yes, this is 21 of 30.
So, when I get told that a piece of a resolution comes in, in front of people, then I'm supposed to know, and I just got it at 4:00 today in my packet for the pre-meeting, they know about it, okay? So, just for clarification purposes.
As long as that's the standard, we will, we can play that game. But I would love this to be for council.
No, it's your standard, Katie.
If everybody would be interested, because it's a gonna, it's a great opportunity for One Night Square, and I think the city's doing a great job with it.
Okay, Proposed Resolution 22, it's Commissioner Deeds, Sherry LaSalle, 1408 Safia Ave., Utica, New York, 13502. Any questions? Another one, Commissioner Deeds, Jared, John Garfield Jr., 1000 State Street, Utica, New York, 13502. Next one is Commissioner Deeds, Timothy Julian, 137 Higby Road, Utica, New York, 13501. Next one is Rosemary A. Talarico, 1109 Parkway East, Utica, New York, 13501. Next one is a Board of Assessment and Review Appointment for Michelle Thompson, 10 Florrie Drive, Utica, New York, 13501. Did she submit a letter as well?
It expired, so yes, they need to, the assessor contacted us, and said they need to be reappointed. And that's the same for Rogue Talarico too. The previous one, there's a Board of Assessment also.
Thank you.
You received the letters already?
Those are the Board of Assessments.
From the assessor.
That's okay. That's all right. Thank you.
Proposed Resolution Number 27 is for Commissioner Deeds, Michael Gentile, 484 Dan Ellis Road, Utica, New York, 13502. Next one is Proposed Resolution Number 28.
Aim funding, I'm concerned because this one came in at 6:00 today, so hopefully we're all good with it.
So, are you talking about the aim funding? So, it came in at 6:00 because the mayor was at the State of the State yesterday.
I'm absolutely okay with it coming in.
All right, cool. Yeah, I was like, oh my gosh. So, just to give you a quick background on this, State of the State was yesterday. I had three different versions of this resolution in my head and jotted down in my computer based on what the State of the State was gonna be. And obviously, it was tailored to what was stated yesterday, what we now know. So, I would really appreciate everyone's support. This is for all of us. So...
And I think every council person in the last 12 years has been asking for an increase in aim funding.
Yeah.
So, this is something that's definitely not new to the council.
Like to make it full counsel. Any questions?
Yeah.
Any problems?
Thank you so much.
And the last one, Commissioner Deeds, Emily Raymond, 623 Plant Street, Utica, New York, 135... I think that's O2.
It is.
Yeah, I said O2.
Any questions? Any problems?
And one question for Councilman Urban. Are you gonna take out the out of committee Resolution 7 tonight?
Yeah, I wanna pull that out.
For replacement of honorary street sign for Chief Posel.
Yeah, I wanna put Ordinance Resolution Number 7, placement of an honorary street sign, dated 12/18/24. I wanna pull that out tonight and vote on it. Well, I wanna do it at the beginning, because she's sitting here. And that's what we know. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Second to dispense the reading of minutes from the previous meeting.
Motion.
Public comment period, common counsel. We have Mr. Glover, three minutes per speaker. Danny Glover. Danny, common counsel has provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
In agreement.
Go ahead, Danny.
Well, I'm hiding my identity for purposes. I don't want any retaliation for things I'm about to say, but this has to do with the Marcy Correctional video that came out last week. I'm pretty sure I saw a man get tortured and murdered on the internet. For the life of me, I do not know why these murderers are not arrested and put in jail. So I'm a little bit of fear right now for what I'm about to say, so I like, you know, I really don't want any retaliation for this at all, but it's something that needs to be said. Marcy Correctional Facility has always been a problem for the area and for the people in the area. They've done nothing but unleash murderers, rapists, and pedophiles into our city. The entire correctional facility needs to be shut down and the budget needs to be moved over back to our psychiatric center and to begin refurbishing and rebuilding our psychiatric center. This is where we are right now. Time has come. I don't know exactly what happened on the video. I've been watching it, it still doesn't make any sense to me. I still don't know why these men have not been arrested. I find that awfully strange, but this reaches to levels that I don't want to get involved in, and I don't want any retaliation, but time has come to shut down Marcy Correctional Facility and arrest these killers, and that's about it. Have it going.
Thank you. Nathaniel Tough. Common counsel has provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period. In agreement?
I haven't seen it. Where is it?
It's right there, so.
Yeah, I've been here before.
Okay.
First of all, what I'm about to say, I would like to be looked at as an individual, and I would like to be distinguished. 2009, I received a utility patent. A utility patent for a safety feature in an automobile. Common counsel and everyone in the city of Utica, I'm pretty sure you received a copy of that. It would have been nice to be recognized off of that, but that's really not what I'm down here for. I'm down here because I don't see us hungry as we used to be. You know, we have a parkway that's designed by a famous gentleman from New York City, same guy who designed Central Park. We have a lot of iconic things and monuments, and we have a lot of rich history here. What I want to say is, I felt if my persuasion was a little different, then maybe I would have gotten a little recognized. Now, I ask everyone in this room, can you think of something that don't exist? Can you think of one thing that don't exist? Well, I did that, and my own city couldn't even recognize me for it, but moving along. That was just to let me, that was just to make it clear that my ideals are conceptual. I have about 25 ideals that don't exist. We need to start pushing ourselves further into the future, instead of sitting here, staying in the same place, being complacent, because the future is taking place whether we want to accept it or not. And I have some things that I think that would benefit our city. Our crime rate is up because a lot of people don't have jobs. There are, well, some of them are not encouraged to work, but there's a few of them that want to work, and then maybe they just can't find it, or they can't seem to find the correct mitts that they need. I'm looking at everything from a holistic point of view. I look at Utica as a whole house, and the roof is just as important as the back porch. The roof is just as important as the basement, because in one way or another, it's going to affect the whole house. Now, moving right along, I have some ideals that could make our city more recognized instead of a lot of the violence that we have here, and it's not our fault, because we prefer to have peace in our city, but that's just not the way it is. We need to be doing more of, well, more of a strategic implementation. I have ideals like new fire equipment that don't exist, that can save lives in seconds. We can, I was going to refer to the Brooks unit. You can control the flow of smoke. You can save lives, and it's a whole unit, and it has a lot of practical applications. Amongst many, amongst in a way of many other things, a door, the harder you hit it, the stronger it gets. A tire, the more you use it, the better it gets. I mean, we have people here that we could benefit from on a commodity level, but instead, a lot of people are being overlooked for what they have to offer. I'm born in this city, I'm raised in the city. My father died in the city, he was murdered in the city. My grandmother owned a contract in the city, she died in the city. So I feel like this, I said this the last time I was here, either you owe your city something, or your city owes you something, and I don't mean that in a negative way. It's okay to give somebody a boost. It's okay to help someone that's trying to do something constructive for their own city. I live here, I care about this city just as much as everybody else in here, and it seems like, it's not many people that's open to give someone the same opportunities you guys had, which was a chance, just a chance. That's all I'm asking for, for someone to take the time to sit down and look at what I have to offer, because I'm not coming to the table with nothing. I'm definitely not coming to the table with nothing. We can become a major booming city, but no one can do anything in here alone, and it seems like, because I may not come from the same area as you come from, it's easy to exclude me. But I have ideals that could bring any city out of debt. Any city out of debt. That could get work here in Utica, and we'll have people coming back from Syracuse like we used to, coming towards our area just to work, because this is real. That's all I want to say. God bless the United States, and God bless Utica, New York.
Thank you, Nathaniel.
Thank you.
Ron Vincent. Ron, common counsel has provided you a copy of Section 3244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
My name's Ron Vincent, I'm a resident of North Utica. I'd like to start out tonight on a good note, and I'd like to commend our DPW Parks Department, because this is the first big snowstorm winter we've had in probably three, four years, five years, and in my opinion, I think our streets are looking great. They've done a good job of plowing and salting, and I commend them very much. Earlier tonight, I was sitting here listening to people talking about, for about 20 minutes or so, about people not maintaining their properties with mowing their lawns because they don't do it, picking up their garbage that they're leaving all over. One thing that didn't get touched on, and I'd like to elaborate on, is snow removal. There is a law in the city of Utica, you own a piece of property, you have a sidewalk, you have to maintain it. Luckily, living in North Utica, only about 10% of our properties have sidewalks, curbs, storm drains, things like that. The rest of North Utica doesn't, but the rest of the city, you have all those luxuries. You have sidewalks, you have curbs, you have storm drains, but it's your responsibility to take care of the sidewalk in front of your house. I think what we need to do is get to these people and tell them, say, "Look, yeah, summer's not here, we're not going to come and mow your lawn, we're not going to come and pick up the garbage you put all over your yard, we're not going to come out and shovel your driveway, your sidewalks for you too." Start finding these people, tell them to get it done. A lot of people have people come to their homes and plow their driveways. If you can afford to do that, tell the guy to give you a price for cleaning your sidewalk too, if you can't do it yourself. Coming down Herkimer Road in North Utica, next to the funeral parlor, there's a building that's up for sale by Pavia. It used to be a medical doctor's office or something. Sidewalk's not plowed, but it's got a big sign out there for sale, for lease, for rent, whatever, by this company. It should be the It should be their responsibility or the person that owns it to keep the sidewalk clean. There's an elderly guy in his eighties. I see him just about every morning, coming down Herkimer Road, pushing a shopping cart with a little grocery bag in it. He's pushing the shopping cart because he has a hard time walking and he has to walk in the road because the people aren't doing their sidewalks. I've seen him get almost hit three times. I stopped one day, I pulled in the parking lot, offered him a ride, asked him, "Why do you have to have a shopping cart? Can't you just walk with that little bag?" He says, "I go and get my groceries every day for my food for the day." I says, "Well, if you're getting food for one day, you should be able to carry the bag. Why do you have to have the cart?" He says, "'Cause I can't walk without it." Come on, people, grow up. Help yourselves out, help your neighbors out, help the people of the City of Utica. Shovel your damn sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. There's no guest speaker, communication from the mayor?
Mayor? I've had quite a few communications. So we can, I've taken a lot of the time in the council. Thank you for having me and listening. So I look forward to working with this legislative body on the resolution we will hopefully pass later. Will be attending NICOM again in early February and it is my goal to proliferate not only that resolution, but the other documents that I'm proposing with the other mayors in the state to hopefully join in and pass similar resolutions to see if we can get AIM funding adjusted. Syracuse did a report called AIM Hire a couple of years ago. That's credited in part with the work we did at NICOM last year with the temporary funding addition that came this year. We have to keep funding for that, because the AIM funding, what a lot of people don't realize, when you compare that to the rest of our funding sources, that is meant for general revenue. That is meant to be a revenue share of the income tax, the sales tax, everything we send to Albany as constituents, work hard and live in this city. It is truly meant to be by definition, a redistribution back to the municipalities that sent that money to Albany, similar to how the county sales tax works, right? It's the stagnation of that funding which has been putting so much pressure on the property tax levy in the City of Utica. I was a first-time homebuyer in two thousand and four. If I go back and look at that house that I purchased in two thousand and four, and the property taxes have almost tripled. But the AIM funding, my income tax, the sales tax that my hard-earned money spent, you know, actually generates sales tax and goes to Albany, that does not get redistributed appropriately. And it's because of that that we keep having to only look to one place to fund the actual services we need in this city. So that's why I'm here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Report of city officers. Brian Thomas, Urban Renault.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Brian. Stephanie Giadorio, Corporation Counsel.
Nothing to report.
Assistant Fire Chief Ambrose.
Nothing to report.
Lieutenant Charlie Parker.
Nothing to report.
Chief Gentile.
Nothing to report.
Mark Sokolowski, Commissioner Parks. City Engineer Nick Breidenbacher.
Nothing to report.
No, hang on. Talk about the lights, the night of square.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, I want that reported.
I have something to report.
I didn't want to steal it on you. I handed it to you.
The Signal Maintenance and I visited the night of square a couple of months ago and we have purchased just under a million candle power of lights to light up the night of square area, bringing a little more visibility to for everybody, safety, and then meeting with Osada on Monday, I feel that that would be a great addition to what we're trying to do to the area. There's, that's all I have to report.
It's, the monument is Sailors and Soldiers. Sailors and Soldiers Monument, right?
The night of square, yeah.
Dimly lit.
Very dimly lit and there's a lot of dark areas in the backside, bringing in more power, you know, we may even need to wash it a little bit, because it might be tarnished.
No, but the lights, not all the lights are even working last year.
Yeah, it's very dimly lit and once Duncan Donuts parking lot goes out, which it does a little later in the night, that area is very dark. Even with the lights that we have, we may have a couple out, like the Genesee paint area, but even with lighting that we have, it is not lit adequately enough. So by increasing our light power, which we have ordered these lights already.
The goal is to kind of make it like Washington Monument. It's going to be lit.
You can see it from the sky.
Thank you, Nick. Marcus Phillips, Commissioner of Coats.
Nothing to report.
Pet project.
No miscellaneous communications, we have a cash report.
The City of Utica Cash Report for December 2024 totals ten point one one six million received and filed.
Petitions, Remonstrations, and Appeals, First District Councilmember Katie L.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you again to Osada. I know you've been working hard on getting this grant up and running with the city and thank you for all the city's support with that and another great turnout tonight and public participation. So thank you for everybody who came out to speak. That is all.
Thank you. Second District Councilmember, Majority Leader, Robert Burmaster.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing. I just want to thank everybody for coming.
Third District Councilmember, President Protup Joseph Beatr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing tonight, just wishing everyone a happy new year. This is our first meeting in the new year. Other than that, nothing, nothing on my end. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Fourth District Councilmember, Frank Carcone.
I'd just like to say, I've had a lot of compliments on how the DPW's kept up the streets. Thank you to them and happy new year.
Thank you. Fifth District Councilmember, Vanessa Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank the Utica Police Department and the Utica Fire Department, because I was in a bind yesterday for speakers and they both, both departments sent somebody from their departments to speak to some of the youth that we work with at the school up at MVCC. And also to thank Nick for, Engineer Nick, for coming last night to Cornhill Neighborhood Meeting. He got out alive, so that was a good thing. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Sixth District Councilmember, Joseph Beatres.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank all you guys for supporting my resolution. I appreciate that. And then just very quickly, I'm not going to, I'm going to correct Mr. Vincent. He says we haven't had snow in three years like that. I believe we haven't had a three-day snow in twelve years and I believe those guys did a great, great job. It must be the new mayor, he likes the snow. I also want to thank the Parks Department for getting our ice skating rink up and the continuous work they got on the parkway and getting, using the hills and we get to use that this year, which is very good. There's a lot of work that goes into it and I just want to say thank you. I also want to thank the administration for putting the notice of the website for the roads. Should have been done probably ten years ago or however long when they paved, when they passed the paving program. So now people can see where their roads, you know, rank and stuff. I think that's very helpful to all of us when people are calling, telling us how bad their roads are.
paveutica.com.
Yes, paveutica.com.
paveutica.com.
So, and lastly, I will, I will say one thing and I know we're, I don't want to be long-winded, but I am. I do want to thank the mayor for coming here tonight. He had a lot of stuff to go over and you know what? When the mayor sits over on the table and can explain it to you, it's a lot easier than calling a committee meeting and going through. It was all good legislation and I appreciate you coming. Lastly, Monday, January twenty-seventh is the North Utica Monthly Meeting. Our guest speaker is going to be Deputy, the Deputy City Engineer Nicholas Brettenbacher? I don't think he's Deppin', I don't think he's Deputy.
I like it. It's got a good ring.
I don't think he's deputy, he is the engineer.
No, the last name, Breidenbacher.
Breidenbacher, what did I say? Okay, and.
I like Brettenbacher.
Brettenbacher, I'm sorry. You guys know what I mean. And then also sweet treats by Vanessa. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember-at-Large, Minority Leader Mark Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have the gift of gab. I have nothing to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. Councilmember-at-Large, Samantha Calissimo Testa.
I've got nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
And Councilmember-at-Large, Jack Lametico.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to thank everybody for coming today. It's a little cold out and you made it, so thank you. You know, everybody's talking about the roads with a great job you guys did and I concur on that, so good work. I think, I told them last time, they did a great job. So anyways, thank you, Mark, and the rest of DPW and the Parks Department for everything you do and of course, the Engineering Department. Get them lights going. Thank you very much out here.
There is a provision under the city charter that department heads are supposed to attend council meetings, but I've been sitting here a long time and I must say that the members of this administration have been present more than I have seen in years. And that's good for the Common Council, because you congratulate them in person for the wonderful job they did during the snowstorm, for the hard work they do in general. The Police Department gave us two representatives and we always have somebody here from any of these departments. And I personally think it, I'd like to point that out, because I've seen a lot of council members be here and wish they could ask somebody a question, but the people aren't here. They're supposed to be here. And this mayor evidently, not only does he make sure they're here, but he comes. And I think that that is also a good thing for the Common Council, to have a very close relationship with the mayor and the members of the council, because they can work out their differences on a face-to-face basis and get all the answers that they want. And I'd like to congratulate the mayor for being here as often as he is and I am very happy with my relationship with the Corporation Counsel's Office. And I think all of these people sitting at that table, they are working and doing such a good job for the City of Utica. And I would say, if you're going to live in a place that's well-taken care of by its government and its employees, Utica, New York. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. A motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number One. Resolution requesting assistance in hospital crisis, whereas a recent news article discussed the ongoing trouble at SUNY Upstate Hospital and San Joseph's Medical Center in Syracuse, where both facilities are negotiating with the governor's office for more funding. Whereas although the City of Utica has a newer hospital facility in the Wynn Hospital, recent events have demonstrated that this facility is already overburdened, most critically in its ability to accommodate persons seeking the treatment in an emergency department. Further resolved that the government officials, state and federal, along with Governor Holkel, should explore providing additional financial and staffing support to all central New York hospitals. Further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to all the legislators and government officials who are engaged in discussions concerning the allocations of funds for local hospitals. You going to vote now?
Just a question. Councilman Beatres, were we going to attach the email to the resolution? Was that, okay.
I have that.
Okay. And go to the table. Okay, thank you.
Nineties adopted.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Two.
Motion.
Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved that the Common Council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the City of Utica, New York, within the two-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Sherry Burmaster, twelve oh two Capitol Avenue, Utica, New York, one three five oh two. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Three.
Motion.
Commissioner of Deeds, we have a second?
Thank you.
Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved, the Common Council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds for the City of Utica, New York, within the two-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Alma Mujanik, nine twenty-two Lansing Street, Utica, New York, one three five oh one. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Four.
Motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved, the Common Council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds for the City of Utica, New York, within the two-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Nadine Beresini, eleven twenty-eight Wetmore Ave, Utica, New York, county employee. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
A motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Five.
Motion. Thank you.
Commissioner of Deeds, following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds for the City of Utica, New York, within the two-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Seawat, seven oh two Jefferson Avenue, Utica, New York, one three five oh one. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Six.
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner of Deeds for the City of Utica, New York, within the two-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Jennifer Gorsy, seventy-seven Clinton Street, apartment U four, New York Mills, New York, one three four one seven, county employee. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Seven.
Motion. Second. Thank you.
Commissioner of Deeds for the City of Utica, New York, within the two-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Jack Spath, nine four six two Sessions Road, Secoit, New York, one three four five six, city employee. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
Honestly, the next, just for time's sake, you can read the next three resolutions, the names of them, and then we can just vote on them as a block.
Next four.
They don't have to be individuals, because they're resolutions.
Yeah, motion to introduce proposed Resolution Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven. James Zeca, two six, twenty-six sixty-two Edgewood Road, Utica, New York. Lisa Weeks-Finnegan, nine six oh nine Pinnacle Road, Secoit, county employee. Matthew Black, ninety Clinton Street, Wetsboro, New York, county employee. Frank Miola, thirty-three Nob Road, Utica, New York, one three five oh one.
Actually, could add in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-four. Twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Sherry LaSalle, fourteen oh eight Sophia Street, Utica, New York. John Garfield Jr., one thousand State Street, Utica, New York. Timothy Julian, one thirty-seven Higbee Road, Utica, New York, one three five oh one. Rosemary A. Teller Rico.
There was one more.
Okay, that's it?
Nope.
No, I know.
Nope. Nope, you got twenty-seven.
Yeah. Michael Gentile, four eight four Van Ellis Road, Utica, New York.
And you could just read.
Twenty-nine.
Hang on, guys. Hang on. Emile Raymond, six twenty-three Plant Street, Utica, New York, one three five oh one. Emily Raymond.
And then just number seventeen, Matt.
Twenty-two through twenty-seven, seventeen, twenty-nine.
Katie L., Robert Burmaster, Joseph Beatr, Mark Williamson, Samantha Calissimo Testa, Frank Carcone, Vanessa Irvin, Joseph Beatres Jr., Jack Lametico. Can I have your votes, please?
Nineties adopted.
Very good. I think a motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Twelve.
Thank you.
Second. A resolution appointing candidate for appointment to the Upper Mohawk Valley Regional Board. Richard Carroll, three-year term expires. Richard Carroll, three-year term expires December 31st, 2027. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
A motion to introduce proposed ordinance Number Thirteen.
Motion. Thank you.
Yeah. Ordinance amending Section 2-171 of the Utica City Code of Ordinances. Can I have your votes, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go. Jack.
Nineties adopted.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed ordinance Number Fourteen?
Motion.
Ordinance amending Section 222.1 of the Utica City Code of Ordinances. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed ordinance Number Fifteen?
Motion.
Second. Okay. Ordinance amending Section 222.7G of the Utica City Code of Ordinances. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, it was ordinance Number A, Section A, but Section B.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed ordinance Number Sixteen?
Motion.
Ordinance amending Section 222.7G of the Utica City Code of Ordinances. Can I have your votes, please?
Mr. President, do we need, am I reading this right? Do we need an amendment on this one? Or is it? It's all set. Okay, very good.
Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Eighteen?
Motion.
Amendment to Resolution Number Seven of November 20th, 2024, authorizing the implementation and funding for the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state Marceli Program Aid Eligible Cost of Transportation Federal Aid Project and Appropriating Funds. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
Number Nineteen, can I have a motion to place this into committee?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Hold a second. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Twenty?
Second.
Phil, you want to read this? Okay, I got it. Proclamation recognizing Fred Bresch, Mary Ellen Karat, and Tim Ryan for over 50 years of employment at Sinatra's Market. Whereas since 1912, Sinatra's Market has served our Utica community and throughout the past 113 years has been dedicated to quality food, customer service, and fostering lasting relationships. Whereas Sinatra's Market is fostering such relationships, has three team members who exemplify loyalty and dedication with over a half-century of employment with Sinatra's Market. Whereas Fred Bresch, who has been an integral part of Sinatra's success and has never missed a day of work in five decades. Amazing. Whereas Mary Ellen Karat, who is known for her dedication and willingness to always lend a helping hand and is greatly appreciated. Whereas Tim Ryan, who is known as Mr. Reliable and may have cut more meat for customers than any other butcher in Utica. Whereas the three above-named Sinatra's Market employees have accomplished what many can only aspire to let it be. Proclaimed that the common council of the city of Utica hereby congratulates and recognizes Fred Bresch, Mary Ellen Karat, and Tim Ryan for their many contributions to Sinatra's Market and the city of Utica over the past half-century. Be it further proclaimed, this proclamation will forever be inscribed into the minutes of the city of Utica Common Council meeting on this 15th day of January 2025. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
A motion to introduce proposed ordinance Twenty-One?
Yeah, Resolution, motion.
That was Twenty. Yep, a resolution. Second.
Second.
A resolution supporting the Blue Board Flat Base Asphalt Art Initiative Grant Application for United Square. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
Motion to introduce proposed Resolution Twenty-Eight?
Is it Twenty?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, I got to do twenty-five first. Yep. A motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Twenty-Five?
Motion.
Second. Board of Assessment and Review Appointment, Rosemary A. Tellerico, 1109 Parkway East, Utica, New York, 13501. A five-year term. She'll end on December 31st, 2029 for the Board of Assessment and Review. Votes, please.
Nineties adopted.
A motion to introduce proposed Resolution Number Twenty-Six?
Motion.
Michelle Thompson, 10 Florery Drive, Utica, New York, a Board of Assessment and Review to complete a five-year term. Such term shall end on December 31st, 2029. Votes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nineties adopted.
Twenty-eight, could we?
Yes, motion to introduce Twenty-Eight.
What's that?
Motion to introduce Resolution Twenty-Eight.
Yep, proposed. Second. Whereas aid and incentives from municipalities AIM is a vital program for the survival and success of Utica and similar municipalities across New York State. Without it, essential government services would be at risk of seizing to exist. Therefore, it be resolved that these reasons for the mayor, comptroller, and city council of Utica stand united in advocating for all AIM funding recipients in a justified increase in AIM funding. Votes, please.
Melissa, the only thing that I just want to make sure, that this copy of the resolution also be sent to NICOM, please, the New York Conference of Mayors, because I think that's important. One of the articles that they posted was to me. Can I finish?
I'm sending it.
No, I know, but I want to make sure that we send it as well. But I think that's important to maintain an increase to state aid to cities and villages. Part of our support group is through NICOM, so if we could, just make sure they get a copy of that as well, and I know.
Votes, please.
We could send that to them as well.
Just want to let you know.
Nineties adopted.
Anything coming out of committee?
Discharging some legislation.
You're going to make a motion to discharge?
Make a motion.
All right.
These are legislations in the committee to hold that have been there for, in 2024. The first one is Resolution Number Three, appropriation of spending. Next one is Ordinance Six, amending Section 2-2104. Next one is ordinance number nine, public cannabis consumption. Next one is Resolution Number Seven, creating a Revenue Advisory Committee. Next one is ordinance fourteen, rescind and replace Chapter 2-28. Next one is ordinance one, amending Chapter 1-15. Next one is ordinance nine, police comp. And finally, ordinance ten, police comp. I'd like to discharge these resolutions and ordinances.
Okay. Did we put the resolution for needles in the committee?
We got a load on these, eh?
You're not opposed?
Any objections?
Let's go.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?